Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena's Administrative Meeting. August 18, 2021, 4:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena's City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to provide, to be able to provide the alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the apt usage in your participation. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden?
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Loughlin?
Here.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, at this time I do not see Commissioner Halliday on with us.
Okay.
And Mayor Collins?
Here. Recommendations from Helena Citizens Council, Mr. Sharp? Go ahead, Mr. Sharp.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a quick, quick report. The Citizens Council has established an outreach committee trying to increase our opportunity to reach citizens within our districts so that we feel we are better representing them. That's included, including several things we're doing. One is we're working on a new display which will be publicly shown and that will tell a story that we, of the HCC. And we are working on building a, an email list of interested, interested citizens by district. So we're slowly doing that, but we're making some progress on that. We are going to continue to use Zoom for our meetings through the end of the year. And, and the new HCC in January will meet for the first time at the Civic Center. We've had 28 members attending and most of the meetings we've had 21 or more members attending, plus guests. So if we're going to meet in person, we've got to find, we're working on finding a way to meet publicly and give notice that. So if anybody has any ideas about where we could meet regularly, that'd be appreciated. 326 gets a bit crowded, I have to say. We are, our next meeting is next Wednesday and the new city PIO will be our guest speaker at the meeting. We have no specific recommendations at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sharp. Department Directions, feedback. Direction from the City Commission on recommendations from the Steering Committee and staffs. Manager Holoshow?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Before we get started, I just want to make sure to provide some quick updates on a couple of things, if that's all right with you, real quickly. Great. So I have Director Pinozzo has been working, as you all know, on the e-bikes and summary of information. Just wanted to give you an update on it as this work has continued. I know there's been emails and continued to be emails in the work they're, they're doing. I think it's just a good opportunity to provide just a quick update before we move into the Civic Center item, that is item 3A.
Now I see Christie, Director Pinozzo is on. Mayor and Commissioner, Christie Pinozzo, Parks Recreation and Open Lands Director. Just giving you a brief update on where we are with our e-bike process. Just as sort of some background, we, Helena Open Lands Management Plan identifies specific goals and objectives for recreation. One of those being to develop an e-bike policy for Helena Open Lands, which we started doing this year. Helena City Code Ordinance and Resolution is silent on e-bike use and does not contemplate or define e-bikes. In April, the City Commission determined e-bikes should be defined as motorized and prohibited from use as noted in Helena City Code 7-12-3C or by land deed. And so this predominantly pertains to Helena Open Space Lands on Mount Helena and Mount Ascension. Additionally, the Commission provided direction for city staff to engage in a broader discussion to be completed by December around e-bike use and in the remaining portions of the city. So that is where we are now. We have launched our public engagement initiative. And the city is exploring the potential benefits and challenges that e-bikes and private EU scooters pose within our city. The goal of this information gathering is to inform future decisions on appropriate location and uses for e-bikes and e-scooters. The city completed a public survey. Sorry.
I just want to know if they can hear us.
So, Mr. Sharp?
Madam Clerk, would you mute that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, give me just a moment. Go ahead, Director Pinozzo, I apologize.
That's okay. So the staff has completed a public survey earlier this summer where we received more than 800 responses to questions about e-bike use and interest within the city. Staff is currently reviewing those results and researching and analyzing options and different alternatives. The city also installed e-bike signs at all of our major and minor trailheads throughout our open land system this summer. This has brought about some questions from trail users specifically like trails, specifically on trails like La Grande Cannon. This is a trail that comprises city right-of-way, county right-of-way, Helena Open Lands, some private lands, and it is also used to access many open lands trailheads. Many of our open land trails are complex, similar to La Grande in that they are made up of different ownership. So it is difficult to parse different parts of different trails for purposes of defining them in terms of motorized or non-motorized for e-bike management. We're going to continue with our process that we laid out at the beginning where we have been doing public engagement and analysis. We're now developing and synthesizing alternatives. In September, we look, we're looking to have some sort of public comment with alternatives for folks to be able to weigh in on. We'll have a review and recommendation in October and November and bring to the City Commission for recommendation in December of this year. That's all. If you have any questions, I'm here.
What's the e-bike sign say?
Mayor, it says no e-bikes. And it has a picture.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
A question for the director. So when you start kind of going out for comment on some of these other alternatives, are you doing that primarily through whole MAC? Or are you going to do that through other means?
No, this will be a broad public comment. This is not just e-bikes on open lands. This is e-bikes on our commuter trails such as Centennial Trails and other locations throughout the city that aren't just open lands. So it'll be a broader public comment audience.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The other update I wanted to quickly share with you is that there's been a lot of conversation around the info-only update that was provided in the last administration meeting, administrative meeting around leashes and the use of leashing on open lands. As a result, I've asked the team to pull that item into an administrative meeting on September 15th so that we can have more conversation. There's, I think, some assumption around what that update and info-only was to provide and want to make sure that you have an opportunity to talk directly with Director Pinozzo as well. The community can hear more around it. So that would be again on September 15th. With that, that's my quick summary of items that I wanted to make sure to share to you in advance of the meeting. Items that are next, which is the Civic Center Steering Committee update. Now, do you have any other questions for me before we get started on either of those two items or anything else that you want to make sure I flag before we get going? Because I know we're going to move quick.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So a quick question for Director Pinozzo, the survey that was taken, the results. Will we be able to see those or have access to them? I should say on that, on that, on the e-bikes, I may have not made that clear.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner Logan, I think we are working on a summary of that. And it's somewhat difficult. We have a lot of responses and so we're trying to put a really thoughtful summary together. And we can surely share that with the Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. For the City Manager, I'm really excited about the new infrastructure project webpage. And I'm wondering, are we going to get an update on that to the Commission in the next admin meeting? Or when do you anticipate that will be included in a meeting?
Thank you, Commissioner. We had put it on the September 1st Administrative Meeting for review. But also, I know that our directors were planning to provide an update. So that's Director Leland and Director Knopki on the three projects in particular during the Commission meeting that Commissioner Loughlin had requested. That was Rodney, Benton, and Euclid. Those three projects will be updated during that meeting, but it's also an opportunity for us to flag the availability of the new information on the map off of our city website, which shows all of those projects citywide that are currently open and then also the additional layers of those that are planned for the year and completed in previous years. So we'll also provide an update then.
Great, thank you.
Please continue.
Great. So I will turn it over first to Byron Dyke, who is our Civic Center Manager, along with Director Pinozzo, to share their research and thoughts on the recommendation provided from the staff. As you know, there was the review by the Steering Committee of the Civic Center. The presentation provided, discussed changes in operations and changes in public involvement. And I appreciate that you have given us the opportunity to provide input on what next steps there would be since they affect operations. The other point I want to make sure and share is that I do believe that there are likely individuals who will probably provide input tonight as well on what has been shared by the staff. And also, reminder there was submitted by the nonprofit associations, the a summary of our analysis as well. So I wanted to make sure and just reflect on, there's a lot of information for all of you in, at the end, the anticipated next step would be which direction would you like us to go? So that being a consensus of which direction you would like us to go. So I will now turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, as City Manager Harlow Schalk mentioned, myself, the Parks Director, and Byron Dyke, who is our Civic Center Manager, are both here to give the presentation. I am going to share my screen that has the memo that we put together for this, just, just so folks can follow along on this. This is also provided in the, in the packets as well. So are folks able to see that? I think so. Okay. So I will just give a little bit of background and this is all in the memo as well. The Civic Center Steering Committee that was put together last year was instructed to make recommendations on the purpose and composition of the Civic Center Advisory Board. And in April of this year, the Civic Center Steering Committee recommended to the Commission that we create an advisory board focused on nonprofit, on a nonprofit board of directors that would be responsible for management of the Civic Center, which will include a lease agreement with the City of Helena. After this presentation, the City Manager has requested us, us, the staff, to provide additional recommendations and consideration for the Commission. So the city staff has reviewed the Steering Committee recommendations and thanks the community of volunteers for their efforts and time. It is clear that there has been much investment and they did spend a lot of time very thoughtfully putting together this recommendation. We considered these, this recommendation as well as historic information and research on the facility. The team recommends operations and management of the Civic Center be maintained by the city. As part of this management, it's recommended that an advisory board be formed whose focus is to maximize the use of the Civic Center through increased advocacy, visibility, and accessibility, including support of historic artistic and cultural presentations. This board that we recommend would seek ways to fundraise and develop funding resources that contemplate current and long-term financial and operational need. Last, this kind of board would create a long-term plan to ensure the asset is secured for future generations. The advisory board would be tasked with articulating and implementing further the mission and vision statement of the Civic Center. Consider and advise and recommend to the City Commission the feasibility of a Friends of or Foundation nonprofit organization to fundraise for the Civic Center. They would advise on programming philosophy and make recommendations on public-private partnerships for the Civic Center to enhance programming. And then we have sort of a general recommended composition of that board. And I'll go down to that page here. And then I'm going to turn it over to Byron, to Byron Dyke, our Civic Center Manager, to go through these next couple of topics.
Thank you, Director Pinozzo, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Great to see you all and I'm thankful for the opportunity to join the discussion today. You reflect on staff recommendation on this item. For background, I'll speak to a few relevant items, including our current organizational and management structure. Your Civic Center is a city-owned and operated venue. We have an adaptive organizational structure and plans for continued innovation in terms of roles and responsibilities, emphasizing development of staff capacities and succession planning. For example, our administrative assistant position here has been streamlined to fit the business and industry as an office and events coordinator. Our maintenance technician positions of the past have been reclassified as event and maintenance technician. These changes help us increase our use, diversify programming, and ensure that these resources are really prioritizing and enhance customer experience. These adjustments that are within the current resource allow management to be more aggressive in pursuing the business while positioning the venue to capitalize on new opportunities like public and private partnerships. I kind of note our emphasis on innovation, increased use, enhanced customer experience, and that proactive pursuit of new opportunities and partnerships here. Another thing to go over for information is an objective that we continuously strive for and our team has embraced the challenge of pursuing, and that's managing our general fund support. Well, management of this fund support has been and will continue to be a top priority. We see a potential path to managing fund support to the point of, of breaking even. That comes at a cost in terms of investment and willingness of the community and stakeholders to see the Civic Center continue to adapt and evolve.
Mr. Dyke? Mr. Dyke, I'm sorry for interrupting, but you sound muffled and it's a little sketchy. So I don't know if you're away from the mic or would you speak into it?
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's a little better.
That is so much better.
All right. So the Civic Center has, has not been a year-round use facility due to air conditioning limitations and other challenges. So to ensure year-round use, enhance the flexibility of our space, drive revenues to the point of eliminating the general fund contribution, the city must make the following improvements. One, it would require some capital and operational investments, things like a liquor license, air conditioning, as well as personnel increases. And then a kind of newfound focus on, on the programming piece to continue to increase use and diversify programming. While expanding the Civic Center staff's programmatic purview to outdoor events in spaces like Kendrick Legion Field and other spaces we've identified as partner locations around the city. Another step we'd have to take to, to get to this break-even scenario would be increasing fees for, for high-demand dates. It's really difficult to find an open weekend date here so that compensate for that, increasing fees would have to be considered there. Partnerships and grants, we, we would need to secure sponsorships and revenue generating partnerships while more aggressively pursuing grant and other funding opportunities. And then part of the scenario and the investment piece be some type of bond issue to fund these improvements we're talking about and the maintenance and operating that would go with it. Capital improvements would include heating and air conditioning, building out the lobby to accommodate food and beverage amenities, while improving accessibility. You know, having a focus on the historic preservation piece, adding a performing and visual artist workshop. Adding building safety and security improvements while incorporating rentable meeting and office space. You know, the theme there is the space is restrictive to us getting all the way to that break-even point. So these improvements would focus on significantly enhancing operating revenues and would have a, a massive community impact. So that's kind of a scenario of, of getting to break even for your, your consideration there. Last thing, I'll, I'll touch on here is the, the other alternatives to the recommendations before you. Including the Civic Center could incorporate the advisory board function overseen by the City County Parks Board, potentially with a specific member to represent the Civic Center. This could encompass the exploration and funding of a regional parks and arts district concept. Another alternative is the City, the Civic Center could have an advisory function combined with the Helena Public Art Committee that would broaden the advisory function to more broadly represent arts and programming for the city. Another alternative is the city staff could move forward with the Steering Committee recommendations to include exploring the feasibility of a request for proposals for a third-party operator. That could be for-profit or nonprofit, which would assume the management and operations of the facility by that third-party operator. This last alternative that we recognize is, is if there were to be no change to the current business model and operating philosophy, Civic Center management would continue to pursue, pursue innovative methods that streamline our business model while incorporating many of the options we presented here with the goal that by fiscal year 24, the Civic Center would receive no more than 300,000 in general fund annual contribution. I know that was a lot. I apologize if some of it was a little muffled there at the beginning. Again, I really appreciate your time. I'm going to turn it back over to Director Pinozzo to wrap this up and I'll be standing by for any questions.
Thank you, Byron. Yeah, so we also just have some background information here on the different, just some background on the history of the Civic Center. And then the resources that we used to sort of help us come up with this recommendation. We focused a lot on the Civic Center Steering Committee's 2021 recommendation and supporting documentation regarding the city, the, their, their recommendations there and their other recommendations. The Cultural Planning Group's 2017 Consultative Report, which we talk about and have talked about a lot when we've been discussing the Civic Center. We looked at that and we are implementing some of those recommendations already and have been. Some of the letters of interest that were formally submitted to our request for letters of interest that we put out in 2019. You know, Civic Center staff's subject matter expertise and other, and other materials. So with that, both Byron and I are here for questions and that's all we have.
Thank you, Director Pinozzo and Manager Holoshow and Mr. Dyke. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Please, go ahead.
So I guess my first question is, and this is probably for Director Pinozzo. One thing that I've always thought was interesting was that the, we don't use munis for beer and, and wine. Is there a reason that we haven't done that before or would that be an option moving forward?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, we have a specific beer and wine license for a golf course at Muni, so it can't be transferred over to the Civic Center, if that makes sense.
Yes, that does, but it wouldn't prevent the civic center from getting its own beer and wine license, since, I mean, they aren't that expensive.
Yes, and we do partner with Lewis and Clark, and Byron probably has more specifics on that, if that's important.
Yeah, we have a partnership for auditorium events where we work with Lewis and Clark, who caters those types of events here. We're in a weird kind of void in the department of revenues classifications as far as the beer and wine licenses. So it's actually, you know, fairly expensive to obtain the type of license that would allow us to serve beer and wine at these events here. We don't qualify for any of the, just people, we call it discounted rates that, you know, a golf course or a nonprofit arts center is eligible for.
Sounds like there needs to be a change in MCA then.
Did you say you partner with Lewis and Clark? Lewis and Clark, what, the county?
No, Lewis and Clark Tap Room.
Oh, brewery, huh? Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I just had one other question. So on the, well, I really appreciate kind of the balance that you struck in your recommendation, but I did have a question on one of the alternatives, and that was on the first one that talked a little bit about the regional, the potential of the regional parks and arts district and maybe some sort of inclusion with the city county parks board. Would you envision that as like an advisory board reporting to the city county parks board or just a civic center representative on the city county parks board?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I think it could be either. I had envisioned it more as a representative on the city county parks board of the civic center. As we, the city county parks board, you know, continues to discuss and explore this regional parks district, there are also, there are also, there's also the opportunity to explore an arts district that would be similar. And that's why we sort of have that alternative as something to consider.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So just looking at the memo and the bullets under eliminate the general fund transfer, am I right that bullet one, and I guess it would be bullet six, the last one, bond issue, those kind of go hand in hand? Or are you looking at budgeting those two capital improvement projects in a different way as well?
Mayor, Commissioner, I believe that was all together, hand in hand.
Okay.
That that bond issue wouldn't be inclusive of the investments in the air conditioning.
Okay, so in order to do the air conditioning, the city would have to issue a bond?
Potentially. I mean, there are other avenues we could, where we could, you know, we could fund it, we could fund it other ways.
And do you know? Can I add a clarifier on, before we go on? The Commissioner Olafland, I actually was scrutinizing that bond issue with that same thought in mind on the capital operations investment. The distinction between these two, remember the first bullet and the sixth bullet, is that this intention of the bond issue is broader and in excess of just these two very narrow improvements. So the larger bond issue is this ongoing capital improvements and then also the major maintenance. This first one, just the capital and operational investment, those are just to install, not the ongoing funding and ongoing larger picture issues at the facility itself. So they would be something up $100,000 and $350,000 to $500,000. These would be asks within the capital improvement plan.
Okay, so I guess that raises a couple other questions then. So that's on top of, and I'm trying to remember how much capital improvement projects were reflected in our current fiscal year budget for the civic center, but it was pretty sizable, 100, 150,000 in capital improvement? Is that right? I'm looking at maybe at Mr. Dyke, perhaps he knows off the top of his head.
Yeah, I'm grabbing my plan here real quick.
I mean, I don't need an exact, but this is above and beyond what was in the budget for this first fiscal year?
Yep.
Correct.
Commissioner Olafland is far above and beyond what your, between 150, 200,000, that's in the current budget.
Okay, and then I guess just maybe kind of a bigger picture question and then sort of related to this capital improvement, because I seem to recall when we got the presentation from the steering committee, they also put forward some recommendations for capital improvement, though I don't remember the air conditioning being one of them. How do, so maybe one big, big picture question. Have you all met and discussed your now recommendations with the steering committee? And how, how do you see sort of their recommendations and your recommendations meshing, or do they not mesh? You know, how does this proposal compare to what, you know, what we saw from the steering committee and sort of that set of kind of experts in the community and their feedback?
Commissioner Olafland, I jump in if you're okay. Kristi, we have not had a meeting with the committee yet. We would like to have that. To me, we're taking pieces and parts of what they're proposing and recommending and marrying it with this recommendation that we're making. So in a way, I see that as being a somewhat of a baton pass where, you know, here's these things that are important to this group. How can they fit into this plan moving forward? And that work that's been done to definitely keep informing our decisions and our processes.
The, also, Commissioner, the question was asked by Commissioner Halliday when I had requested that the staff have an opportunity to provide a recommendation. Commissioner Halliday had requested the involvement of the steering committee in this submittal, and I asked no and shared that the, I would not be involving the steering committee in the operational side of the conversation, as this was an operational focus for this recommendation. Operations don't engage a community. We take your recommendations and your requests and we implement. And this is our staff team providing that response. So of course, we would want to have a follow-up conversation with the steering committee. We think we've struck a balance, but as as our commission, we bring to you this balance of at least the staff's input and providing response as well.
Yeah, and Mayor, I mean, I think it would be really worthwhile for the staff to sit down with the steering committee. I mean, this is a, you know, a set of folks that have devoted considerable amount of time researching potential options. They are community members, they are constituents, and I think it would be worthwhile to hear their feedback on what you've put together. I think I personally would appreciate that. I mean, we talk a lot about outreach and community participation. This is certainly a body of folks that have devoted a fair amount of time to this topic. I don't know why we wouldn't lean on them for additional feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, yeah, you can go ahead. I had a follow-up request.
Okay, well, I got one or two questions, Director Pinozzo or the manager or Byron. How is your program being diversified?
Mr. Mayor, the programming piece, which is the type of shows, the content that comes through here, we've made several efforts to diversify that and bring more types of content and programming here, which brings new folks to the civic center that haven't been in the building before, haven't had as many opportunities to enjoy events here. A couple of recent examples, you know, just a couple of weekends ago, we had, we were able to work with some folks out of Vegas. They bought the Vegas Variety Show here, so this is cert performers, acrobats, things like that. Just something different that brought in a wider segment of the community than we're used to seeing here for events. Also recently, you know, working with our partners over at Lewis and Clark Brewery, we brought Country Act, this group's called Reckless Kelly, but they've got kind of an up-and-coming band with a real strong following with that younger demographic that is really excited to get into this space. And it's cool for us to see as they come in, oh, wow, you know, I was here in elementary school, but I didn't know they were doing concerts and that type of thing. So the diversity in programming is kind of what I'm talking about there. And just having more variety and types of events with the objective to get more of our community involved in what we have going on here.
Thank you, and how is the proposed board different from previous?
I think there's several differences. A lot of it depends on what we ultimately task them with. I think a greater focus on the development and fundraising piece. While the previous board definitely had a critical role in that. I think this new board would have a fresh set of eyes to approach that differently. And I think think a little bit bigger or think in terms of how the previous board approached it years ago. I think another difference in the board would be who were able to recruit and place on that board and have some enhanced subject matter expertise and some of the real challenges that we're dealing with, whether it's the programming piece, fundraising piece, or long-term strategy-wise. I think those are the big differences on what we lay out as far as goals for them to accomplish here.
Thank you, and like Commissioner Olafland, I strongly believe that you all should meet with the committee and work some things out and listen, I mean, you know, the two with both groups meeting, I'm sure we can get to a solid, solid agreement on what we want for the center.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Mayor?
Yeah, let me finish.
Okay.
I strongly encourage you all to meet with the committee. Go ahead, go ahead, Manager Hollis Shawk, then Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. I want to ask a clarifying question around the outcome the commission has for the civic center. I think that is the distinction that will help us get to a common place with our the steering committee, who've done, I agree, a tremendous amount of work. The outcome that we have is different than the one that was assigned to the steering committee. So I would like to have an understanding of what the outcome is that you want us to achieve. The steering committee was to recommend the type of advisory board that would be supported, that would support the commission. Their actual recommendation went into operations. So my question is, is it that we are engaging the steering committee in a conversation around the creation of an advisory board and what its purpose is? Or are we talking about the operations of the center and how we structure the facility itself? Those are two distinct differences. One is policy, the other is operations. And I want to make sure I understand before I get into a conversation with the community what it is that you would like us on the outcome side to be focused, especially since the resolution is really what has been driving it.
Thank you. What I'm looking at, I see that some of what, some of what the steering committee recommended is some of the same things, Mr. Dyke, and the rest of the Parks Department is recommending. So I think when they get together, they'll be able to ironclad the recommendations. So I believe they should be able to iron things out. And because I noticed some similarities.
So the similarities are, Mayor, that we are talking about operations and they did as well. That was not the ask, as we recall. The ask of the steering committee was to provide a recommendation on an advisory committee. So I want to make sure that I understand the expectation. I hear your interest in making sure that we're in agreement. I don't believe we have a disagreement with the steering committee. I think we have a disagreement as a staff with the direction that we're getting from the commission. So I'm asking for the commission's direction. What is the outcome that you want on the policy side, not on the operations, but the policy side?
Thank you. Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I had the same concerns as the manager. As we look at the memorandum today and the packet, the direction, well, it just says they're seeking direction from the city commission on recommendations from the steering committee and staff. So in the end of April, we got a pretty significant presentation from the steering committee on what they felt like was their vision for the future of the civics. And we kind of ended it there, and I think the manager pointed out at the end of that meeting, just as she has this afternoon, that and rightly so, I think their original charge was to present to us an advisory board and not an operational structure. So as I kind of got ready for this meeting, it seemed to me like the ask of the commission was, what do you think about staff's recommendation relative to the steering committees? And because I think there is a fundamental difference, and that being who is responsible for the operation and management of the civic center. I believe that the steering committee's recommendation was a nonprofit to be responsible for that. And I think, I think it was clear from past meetings that at least a majority of the commission were uncomfortable, more or less handing the keys over to private organization to run a public asset. And I'm certainly, you know, as we consider what staff is presenting to us today, I'm certainly comfortable with with staff's vision, and I, again, I would echo what everybody has said here today about the work involved and the passion of the steering committee. But in my opinion, we should, the steering committee should have presented to us an advisory committee and not an operational structure. And that's what they got into, in my opinion. So I'm far more comfortable with staff recommendation than if that's the ask today, I'm far more comfortable with the staff recommendation versus the steering committee, because I think, again, I'm not comfortable handing the keys over, so to speak. I think we heard from nonprofits, other nonprofits that were concerned about the creation of a new nonprofit that really would compete with other nonprofits in the community, and could they make a serious, sustainable go at keeping the civic center alive in the future? And so I guess as I look to the two, that's what I thought was the ask today. As I look to the two, I'm far more comfortable with staff's approach than I am with steering committees. So those are my thoughts. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Okay, just really quickly, I think when the staff has a conversation with the steering committee, I think it might be good to have the Big Science Institute for the Advancement of Nonprofits involved too. I know that he was working, he sent us their recommendation, but I know he'd been working with the Myrna and a few others as well. So it might be good to have and a few others as well. So it might be good to have um that additional perspective in the room um if we're, you know, trying to strike a balance here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Olafman?
Yeah, I, I, I guess, I mean, I, I do think that this is ultimately um a, a po- a policy discussion, right? As to the extent to which we want to, you know, how essentially the Civic Center is going to be managed moving forward. I, I think that is a policy discussion. Um, you know, we've had the chair of the steering committee, or the vice, I think maybe the vice chair, I don't know. If, if Nikki is the chair or vice chair, but we, we've had her in front of us at, at least three times in the last year, and not once have we said, whoa, wait a minute, right? So um the steering committee has worked and has provided us updates throughout that process, including spending a fair amount of time talking about what is the vision of, of the Civic Center. I think city staff has been participating in all of those meetings as well, right? So I, I, I do just want to say, I, I think that this is definitely in the realm of a policy discussion. You know, we respectfully uh, uh, you know, paused after the presentation from the steering committee and um rightly so, asked for the staff for their feedback. I, I think it is also fair for us to get additional feedback from the steering committee um on, on their thoughts on the recommendations that are being put forward today. I, you know, I don't actually know much about this Big Sky Institute. I, I, I don't know how much they align or coordinate with, you know, the nonprofit association, which I think is a different organization. But I do think that's, you know, the steering committee and perhaps there are others in, in the community um should continue to be part of these conversations. Um, there are, you know, as Byron said, um, subject matter experts that I think we can also ask. So I, I, I would say, I think I don't think there's any harm in saying, let's, you know, let's, let's have them um provide some additional feedback if, if they're interested. Um, and then take it, take it from there. I also, uh, one other thing, because I think there was a sentiment of like the, the recommendations by the steering committee were to move to a, a nonprofit within the next year. I think they made it very clear that, that what they were looking at was sort of a, a five-year plan, right? That there would be no major changes under even what they were recommending. So I think um, I really appreciate Mayor your suggestion of sort of coming together and finding where are the places where there are um commonalities. Um, and then maybe setting out sort of a longer-term plan for what, what the Civic Center, um, the ma- the overall management of the Civic Center looks like. And, you know, not just the next year, but perhaps in the next five to 10 years.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner uh Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I would just respectfully disagree with Commissioner Olafman in that there was a whoa in my opinion, put on the steering committee. And that was back in November of 2020 when we considered, I think, one of the times Nikki was before us and we considered this idea of going toward a nonprofit. And three of us said that we were not interested in a, in a model that um essentially, you know, I think at the time we used the word privatized, but essentially city employees were not operating and managing the Civic Center. And there was a majority of the defenses of the commission at that time that said um that we weren't comfortable with that. And yet the committee drove on with that. So I, um while you're right, in the spring of this year, nobody really put the brakes to it from the commission's side. Um, I think in the end, they got to the point where um, they did recommend operations by a nonprofit. Yeah, it might not have been this year, but that was the end goal was the, a nonprofit operating and managing the Civic Center. And I, I guess I'm not com- I wasn't comfortable with that in November of last year, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with that now. So in, in terms of who's managing the facility. And, and there are a number of reasons why that have been expressed previously, but uh, that's just where I'm at now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Director Penozzo or uh, Manager Dyke, with your recommendations that you provided. Because part of the reason we've been, we're here today is because of how much um funding uh, uh, the city is putting towards uh the center. With your recommendation, what do you anticipate our input would be when, in terms of funding in the next year, two years? Is it going to be status quo? Or is there going to be a change?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, we don't see maintaining the status quo as really being an option. And, and moving forward, we'll continue to manage that fund support. You know, one of the bullets on the, the presentation was, was by FY24, getting that fund support down to, to 300,000. If, if COVID keeps happening for years, that could be a real challenge. But uh, with some of the innovations we made and the partnerships we, we've been able to put in place, uh, it, it is realistic uh, to, to pretty aggressively manage that fund down uh to, to a level closer to 300,000. It, without a, a firm goal of, of where we need to go and, and what that number needs to be, it's, it's a, a little bit of a challenge for us. Uh, but our, our plan internally here is, is let's keep managing that amount down um, and, and under the current kind of scenarios we're in and the, the structure we're under, uh, getting it to that 300,000 point is, is doable.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, at this time I'll open up for public comments. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first I have uh Michael Streckman with his hand raised.
Go ahead, Michael. You have the floor.
Mayor Collins, City Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity. And Commissioner Olafman, happy to meet with you anytime. To give you the background, you don't have about Big Sky Institute that started, staffed and ran M and A for a number of years before they were ready to um move out on their own. Um, the comments specifically, the written ones in general uh were formed in consultation with a number of nonprofit colleagues. We generally support the staff recommendations with one exception that I will get to. Our recommendations primarily address the interface between the new advisory committee and city planning processes. And um, with concern that I might be stepping into considerations uh clustered as operations, it's just more that anybody that's going to have effective fundraising um also needs to understand and be part of discussions that will affect uh future operations, future enhancements um, and, and longer-range planning. And so the direction is really just to sharpen and clarify that interface so that the advisory body to be created really has a substantive, useful role and, and understanding. Um, on the fundraising front, um, something that has not been raised previously, our recommendations strongly focus on the creation of a permanent endowment. And that the earnings that can be used from the endowment be used to help underwrite the rental fees for nonprofit organizations. And I'll say a little bit more about that in a bit. And, and that gets to the heart of our one area of disagreement of serious substance with the staff recommendations regarding the increase of user fees. And in, in the written material I submitted, submitted, you know, the primary users, uh, those who will be paying the fees, um, not exclusively, but primary are nonprofit organizations. And that is an audience that um has potential for increasing utilization. But increased pricing will be, uh, have a chilling effect on that increased utilization. We're not saying reduce the fees. That income is necessary for the operation of the Helena Civic Center. What we're saying is that over time, gradually, through the endowment earnings, the amount that's paid by the nonprofits toward the user fee will shrink though the total amount coming in, that would not be reduced. So that's kind of the, the heart of our concern that we want to share. Uh, in, in the interest of time, I'm keeping it brief because everything there is, is pretty explicated in the written material I've submitted. I'm happy to answer questions that uh Mr. Mayor, you may have, or City Commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. Madam Clerk?
Next, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Sunde Gal.
Go ahead, Ms. Gal. You have the floor. You have the floor, Ms. Gal.
Thank you. There I am. Hi, guys. Um, this is, uh, thank you for letting me talk. Um, thank you for letting citizens come in and join in on this. Um, Sean Logan said that you guys have already voted on having a nonprofit and three people voted against that. I'm not sure why we're still uh, putting the nonprofits as part of this. Um, so I find that confusing as a citizen. Um, I'm wondering why we can't create a job like a city civic manager hospitality job that that would be part of, and that would be considered, you know, an, a, a definite job. Or, you know, a nonprofit. My concerns about the Big Sky Institute is um, as a citizen, the endowment for the profits, it, it seems to me like it would become a venue for just nonprofits and paid for by citizens like myself. So um I don't agree with the nonprofits and I agree with the vote that's still standing. And we need to move forward and create something new, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other hands raised on this topic at this time. Um, I have also not received any written comment on this matter.
Thank you. I'll, I'll this time ask for consensus. Let's see where, where we at.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, well, I will say I, I, I really appreciate the balance that I think the uh staff struck with their recommendation. Um, and I'm not sure what the city manager would see as the next steps, but I certainly um wouldn't want to discourage a, you know, meeting of the steering committee, um, the staff and, and Big Sky Institute. Um, but I, I, I really do appreciate all the work they put into, you know, bring forth of, I, what I think is a pretty middle-of-the-road proposal, just based on what we've been hearing over the last year. Um, and so I, that's, that is the direction I would be supportive of. Um, and then if they have other thoughts coming out of um, a discussion um with others, as you've suggested, I would be okay with that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Logan? Well, you already stated where you are.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, I'm uh comfortable moving forward with the uh staff vision for the future of the Civic Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Olafman?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would just echo, I think it would be useful for the staff to meet with the steering committee, and that would be my request. Um, I mean, I, I, looking back at the resolution, you know, I mean, it, it, it does include assisting staff in developing a request for proposals that explores private-public partnerships, opportunities for the Civic Center, including but not limited to programming concessions, concessions or operations. So, uh, you know, I, I do think that it would be useful to circle back with those that spent eight months researching and, and, and really digging into this. Um, that, that seems at a, at a minimum, something that we should do out of, out of respect for those that that took, took that much time out of, out of, out of their schedules to invest in, in the future of the Civic Center.
Thank you, Commissioner. While I um would support the, the, the staff recommendation, I want, I want to make it clear that we will not enter team status quo. Because I mean, I, I heard a lot of great talk today, great stuff today, and that's good. But leaving this meeting and going right back to status quo will not be the, 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 the way of the land. Because um part of the reason we, we were at this conversation is because we're looking at funding. And we have to see, like, uh, and Mr. Dyke, I, I appreciate what you said when you talk about your long-range plan. That's awesome. I hope we'll be able to go through with those things and not just go back to status quo. Commissioner Dean?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, just one more thing. You, you prompted something for me. I do think that we should also just be reminded that we are still very much in the midst of COVID. And I know one of the performances that was scheduled has, has had to be pushed back because the performers either had COVID or recovering from COVID. It sounded like something like that. So um, and obviously, everyone in the events and hospitality industry is uh not at um full tilt yet. So I do think that I agree with you, but I also think that we should uh just be reminded that nothing is going to be moving in the manner in what exactly what
Oh, yeah.
you know, the 2017 plan envisions, which I think is exactly what Mr. Dyke has been implementing is, you know, what that plan has envisioned. But um, obviously, COVID has changed so much of it. So just want to temper expectations until we real, you know, public health is, is uh on the up and up.
I, I hear you and I totally understand that. And I, yeah, but I just want, want the, the, the the board, I mean, the director and the manager to know that uh it will be close to the monitor to see where we're at. Because um, I hate for us to go back to status quo. That's all. Any other final comments from the commission? Okay. Now, I know uh, I, I, my schedule here has been mixed up because what I see here is what we give to the public is totally different from what I have here as my schedule. On my agenda here, I do not have the board application review, the regional airport authority commission and all the other stuff. So we will now do our board application review. And um
Uh, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I think, uh, so here's the really great part about the new um schedule and work of our team is that you're actually looking at the, I think, the commission meeting for the 23rd because we already got it published. So you have
That's the 18th, man. August 18th, administrative meeting.
The 20 So I see on the commission meeting for the 23rd, board appointments. Okay, that would be board authority commission board adjustments.
Yes, that's board appointment. What I just mentioned was board review, application review.
Ah, I do not see that on
Exactly. That's why I just see that on what we gave to the public. So, Madam Clerk? Would you jump in here? Would you jump in here?
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, Madam Manager, I apologize. Sometimes there is a disconnect between the online agenda that's posted by our office and what's distributed to. The mayor for his. As he calls it, the schedule of events for tonight. Item number two is under committee discussion, it should read board application review. I'm looking at the agenda online right now. That includes the regional airport authority commission, board of adjustment, business improvement district, city zoning commission. The consolidated city county planning board, Helena housing authority. Helena open lands management advisory committee and Helena public arts committee. The commission was forwarded. The mayor's recommendations to them all. Earlier in the week. And at this time, I would ask if there's any. Comments or questions on any of those applications.
That's what we're talking about. Any comments or concerns or questions?
Mister Mayor, I have a question, not not about anyone in particular, but curious as to what the status is. After these appointments that we will make motions on on Monday, what the status of filling vacancies will be.
I think we've been, we have done pretty well when it comes to filling those vacancies because especially public arts, I think public art is almost. Filled to capacity, so we've had quite a few people come in and. We're filling them up.
Based on how many we had, I thought, so I just was wondering if anyone knew.
Madam Clerk, do you know the 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 amount?
Sure, Mister Mayor, Commissioner Dean, can you ask your question again? I apologize, maybe I I missed something.
No, I'm just curious. I I know that after we had put out the PSA to solicit applications to fill the vacancies. And then we adopted. Or or moved some folks last time and then moving more folks on Monday, and I'm wondering after Monday's meeting if they all are. Moved in the affirmative, how many vacancies will have left or if we'll have any.
Yeah, so I don't have an exact number of the remaining vacancies vacancies for you tonight. I will tell you it's considerably less than it was. We did lose. A couple of members just in the past few weeks since we issued that monthly PSA. So we have, you know, we will be issuing another PSA at the end of next week, which will include those vacancies and any remaining ones. So you should see what vacancies are current as of. This date. Or any that come in, hopefully none, fingers crossed, at the end of next week when we issue that new PSA, but it is it is quite a bit less. You can tell from this list. Of applications and hopefully if they are all approved on Monday night formally. We will have filled a considerable amount of vacancies.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
You bet.
If you would like, though, Commissioner, Mister Mayor, if you'd like. Earlier update on the number of vacancies, I'd be happy to provide that for you.
That PSA works for me, I just like to let folks know if there are more, so that's helpful.
Okay, so any other comments or questions for the revision of the application? Okay. Uh, we'll move on to. City County Board of Health Authority. HB 257 and HB 121, Manager Holshock.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, the apologies for the. Process issue here on the boards themselves. I'm gonna have a follow-up conversation with. The city attorney and the. Clerk of the commission. My apologies, I normally. Set the agenda and I was not aware we were doing this, so I I I will say that this is one of those finer points that over time I haven't focused in on. Because those have run in a separate process, but I want to make sure. That in the future, I I know we're in the middle of our our work to improve the overall board process, so I'm positive. I won't do that again, so apologies. On the. County Board of Health, as you are aware, the legislative session this last year, House Bill 257 and House Bill 121. Amended the authority of the. Public health official, yes, the public health official and established expectations. On elected officials, so based on review of those bills and. An analysis of our work across not only the city, but also with our partners at the county and at. And in East Helena, the city attorney, whom I will turn this over to. Has provided a recommendation to you all and as well an analysis. So I'll go ahead and move it over to him now. Thomas.
Thanks, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, so we did bring this. Subject discussion back in May, May 26th. And the recommendation at the time to comply with. House Bill 257 and House Bill 121, which have to be read together, they both amend the same sections of current Montana code annotated. Was to define the local governing body, since it's not currently defined by the interlocal agreement, which is quite old. Was to define it as basically just kick it back to the Board of Health and to and define them as the local governing body. After further discussions with League of Cities and Towns. Mako, Lewis and Clark County, East Helena. It it became apparent that wasn't the intent of the bill and wasn't going to be supported. So the the recommendation now. Is to appoint the Lewis and Clark, the Board of Lewis and Clark County. Lewis and Clark County Board of County Commissioners. As the local governing body, it's the the easiest workaround to a rather complex set of legislation. The other alternatives, and those are alternative one, which would be to grant. Equal representation to each of the three governing bodies, meaning the Board of County Commissioners, the City of Helena and the City of East Helena. Each would get one representative and it would be a third party board that would approve of the. Health regulations that would apply to all three jurisdictions and including the unincorporated areas of Lewis and Clark County. That that's. Alternative is is difficult because it would subject all of the jurisdictions decisions to. Elected officials who did not vote for those officials. Also, there are significant liability and cover liability coverage and legal counsel issues. For that independent board that we would need to work through and I'm not sure that we could get there. Alternative number two would make the current Board of Health make its recommendation to each respective. Governing body, meaning make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Make the recommendation to the City of Helena and the City of East Helena, and then each one of those. Jurisdictions would adopt its version of regulations that they wanted implemented. The health officer would then implement those differing regulations for each jurisdiction, obviously. That creates difficulties in enforcing three potentially different standards in three different jurisdictions. And you still have liability coverage issues for the enforcement. Those would need to be resolved if the commission wanted to pursue alternative number two. Alternative number three would be to terminate the interlocal agreement entirely. And the City of Helena would establish its own health department, which it is required to do by law, in which we currently meet by the interlocal agreement with the county. The city would need to create, fund and implement a new city department to enforce its own health codes within the city. Given the need, especially with variants of of COVID arising. And the need to have health regulations that can be changed. It's my recommendation that the Board of. The Board of County Commissioners be appointed as the local governing body, amend, update the interlocal agreement to cover that. So that we could move forward with future regulations.
Who who consists of the board of county commissioners?
That's Commissioner Hunthausen, Commissioner Rolfe and Commissioner McCormick.
Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions? Oh, sorry.
Yes, please ask them. Would you remind me, would you go back over that? Recommendation of the board of county commissioners again?
So under to to, since the current Board of Health cannot adopt or change any of its current regulations, it can only make a recommendation to the local governing body. We don't have that defined in the interlocal agreement. My recommendation would be to amend the interlocal agreement to define the governing body as the county commission. And so the county commission would then adopt or not adopt. Regulations that would apply to all of Lewis and Clark County, including the City of Helena and the City of East Helena and all unincorporated areas.
Thomas, can I ask a clarifying question? Does this remove the city's authority to be more strict?
Good point, Mayor, Commissioner. The city could adopt its own regulations. I don't think this would preclude the city from adopting its own. Or or using its police powers and its charter power to adopt regulations that would apply within the city, subject to state law, of course.
I am not comfortable with the city being totally excluded from that process.
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, so I I guess I have a couple of questions, so we. To comply with the bill. Or I guess the law now. We have to choose a. Local governing body. On the right track, right, Thomas?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and and the way that's different from. Before the governor signed this bill was that the Board of Health could adopt these without the county commissions. Or the city's. Approval, correct?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, that's correct.
Okay, but under the staff recommendation, in order to comply with with the new law. The Board of Health, as it is right now. Would provide a recommendation to the county and then the the commission, the county commission, and then the county commission would either accept or reject. That recommendation. Correct?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, that's correct.
Okay, and then I get my other question is, so I know right now the. The mayor is our commission representative on it, but I think it can be the mayor or a commissioner, right?
Oh, destiny, yeah, sure.
Yeah, and then for the for the member at large residing in the city. Does that appointment come, is that adopted by the city commission or is that just someone that applies directly to the Board of Health?
I'm not entirely sure. I believe it is appointed by the city commission as a resident of the city.
Okay.
But I'm not entirely sure. I will double check if that comes through the city commission or if it's just. Chosen by the other eight members of the board.
Okay, and then my my last question, you might have mentioned this, I know. That it sounds like this is what Mako is. And I don't know if the league is recommending or not, but do you know if the other. Big, well. They the 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 other big six are also considering the same. Course.
Yeah, I know. I I know the the city attorneys, we all met, this is a obviously a really difficult dis- discussion, it's very complicated. The the complications with alternatives one and two. Makes them almost untenable and and I recognize the difficulty with with my recommendation. But it is unfortunately the the cleanest way that we can start to have responsive regulations moving forward. Without getting bogged down in potentially. Unresolvable issues regarding liability coverage.
Yeah, okay. I'll just say for the record too, once again, this legislature who says they don't like bureaucracy, just adding more complications and bureaucracy, but. I guess that's for the next session.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Olaf.
Yeah, just maybe a question about that alternative one, so. If I'm understanding this right, I mean, right now, the way that it operates is that we have a governing board. That is making public health decisions that has representatives from other elected bodies. And and Lewis and Clark County itself is subject to those decisions, so I'm I'm trying to understand. What's different there than how it operates now? Is it something as it relates to the law that changed or? And this is really a question for the city attorney. How how does it compare to what what? How it operates currently?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Olaf, and I think that's a fair point. I would point out that East Helena is that the commission itself is not specifically or a member of their council is not specifically. Called for on the board. It's the. The bylaws and the interlocal agreement doesn't mention East Helena, the bylaws state it's a resident of the City of East Helena recommended by the governing body and I think. My understanding is past practice is that the. The governing body, the East Helena City Council has appointed one of its members or the mayor.
Yes.
So. In terms of the difference between where we currently lie and I think the the question being. The difficulties with insurance, how do we handle those? My understanding is that because it is. Allowed by state law and governed. Provided legal counsel by the county attorney's office, the county's insurance applies. When we get into a new situation under alternative one. Where the other governing. Where the you're gonna have a more, I I believe, have a more bolstered. Review because it's going to be a a separate third party. Is going to create these issues, not to say they don't exist now.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Jordan, where is the county on this?
I, you know, Mayor, I don't, I don't know that answer. I don't know the answer.
If I may, Mayor, I spoke with the city, I talked with the county administrator. And have been in conversations with them, the. All of us were surprised that the. The Board of Health, as our primary recommendation. Was would not be sufficient because. There are members on it who are not elected officials, so the intention of this, as I, we understood it and it was, then we followed up in. Confirmation with the League of Cities and Towns. Was that the intention was to give the authority to an elected official, not to those who are not elected officials, so. Uh, that's the the first distinction as to why we. We had to come back to you all to discuss a different alternative. Now, on the the county side, they're open. To whatever the best thoughts are there, they're open to. The city being its own and making its own decision. They're open to. Themselves being the higher just in that that county role. And then. The city having its own role, but. As I said, there's a, there's not a strong feeling other than. They know, much like we do. People who are not elected cannot be on this, this new board, whatever the decision is. This higher level recommendation from the county. That it be the county itself. Again, does not remove your authority.
Yeah, Mayor, can I just make one comment on that?
Go ahead.
So so I had that question initially, the the extent to which the City of Helena has the authority to sort of regulate. Within city limits. The problem that we face and and we know this from experience over the last two years. Is that a sizable portion of people living in Lewis and Clark County live just outside of the City of Helena borders, right? So it is actually really important for us to find a way that we can work collaboratively with the county, with East Helena. I mean, ideally with Jefferson County too, right, but at a minimum within these elected bodies within the county. Because our populations, you know, there there is a, there is a. there is a city limit border, but the reality is that, that, that means very little when we talk about public health. So I, I, my, I raised my hand because I'd love to see, Thomas, if you also could share out any sort of correspondence you've had with the league, that would be super helpful, as well as, you know, if there are other municipalities, as Commissioner Dean inquired, that, that are, that are moving forward in a particular, in a, in a particular direction. If we could get their materials as well, that would be really helpful.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Last thing, Mr. Mayor, I've just added, I don't know, you know, we have time before our next city-county meeting, but it might be worth, you know, if we don't have a direction as of then, maybe this could be an agenda item and ask Mayor Shell if he also could be in attendance. Because obviously, you know, we're all very closely connected. So it might be good to have him at the table as well.
Any other comments?
See, Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Comis-, um, man.
Yeah, the next city-county more joint meeting does not have an agenda item on it, and it's the counties to set. I'll ask, I'll send a note over and request then that they add this item to, to the agenda. And then also, I just want to point out the, the distinction. And I know that this, I know it doesn't matter by way of communications, but in the bigger picture, that the city of East Helena is not a formally home-chartered city. So it is a, it is, while it does elect its own mayor, it has a, it doesn't have its own charter. So just to put that out as well, as part of the conversation. And I also ask that they invite Mayor Shell. Thank you.
Any other? So are you looking for directions tonight, Mr. Jordan? Manager, Alashok?
Yes, it appears as though that we need a further conversation and more research provided to you all. So Thomas, the city attorney, will provide that the further documentation is requested from Commissioner Olafman indeed, and then we can have that additional conversation. The timing matters only because we're beginning to stand up more concerns in the community around COVID and its variants. And so the question becomes even more important around the authority locally. So that was, we were only trying to be sensitive to the timing and in response to concerns from the county that they at least understand who the authority is when we make decisions locally. So I think the next meeting is September 14th. It's not that far off, it's a bit away.
Can I ask a related question, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just given, obviously, I was just looking at the, the Public Health Decision Making Dashboard that, that Drunden Public Health use. And I know that Incident Command Team had stood down when things were better in the spring. Was that the Board of Health that gave the, I guess, authority to stand up the Incident Command Team? Or is that the county? And how does that interact with making this decision? Because I, I wonder, are we going to have to stand back up, you know, the Incident Command Team if things continue to get worse?
So Incident Command is around emergency declaration, and the emergency declarations are no longer in place. We are in, we are, Amanda Opitz is our representative with the county. And she's requested that the restart of Tuesday, I believe it's Tuesday morning meetings, either Tuesday or Thursday. I apologize, I'm not sure, Amanda, if you're on, if you want to, to share that. But we did, it's Thursdays, thank you. On Thursday mornings, this coordination team internally with the cities, the cities in the county, to have those deeper conversations around the access to the subject matter experts there.
Okay, so Mr. Manager, Halashok and Mr. Jordan, you all gathered the necessary information and let us know.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Creation of an advisory committee to make funding recommendations for the Housing Trust Fund. Manager Halashok?
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, tonight, the team, both Kara Snyder and Sharon Hogan, our Director of Community Development, Sharon Hogan, and our Housing Coordinator, Kara Snyder, are on the line, and they are providing to you recommendations around the Advisory Committee to Make Funding Recommendations for the Housing Trust Fund. So I'll turn it over to Director Hogan.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm going to let Kara kind of go over this memo. That'd be a great introduction to the commission for Kara. But just really quickly, we've been working with our, the Housing Task Force, our consultant, and other, other outside people to kind of come up with the configuration of a housing advisory group. In the resolution itself, it doesn't call for the establishment of Housing Trust Fund specifically, but it was the commission's recommendation and also staff's recommendation that we put together a loan advisory group. So with your permission, I'll turn this over to Kara.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. And so I'll just get right into this, and I can actually share my screen here so you can see the, the memo that, that I'm looking at. And, and so there's two kind of policy issues we want to bring up. The first would be whether or not to actually establish this advisory committee. And then the second would be to address any potential issues you might have with the proposed makeup of the committee. And so, um, so I'll scroll down here for you. So the staff recommendation is that an advisory committee be created by resolution for the purpose of providing recommendations to the commission on what projects should be funded through the Housing Trust Fund. And staff recommends the following makeup for the committee. So it'd be five to seven members who will serve on a volunteer basis, a three-year term each. Membership would include two community members with direct experience in housing insecurity, one citizen-at-large, one member of the nonprofit housing sector, one member of the real estate sector, one member of the banking and finance sector, and then one member with a background in engineering or architecture. And so a couple of alternatives for your consideration. The first would be to not create this committee and to instead have the community development staff give recommendations or select applications for funding. A second alternative would be to have our current Housing Task Force actually serve in the capacity of an advisory committee. However, the, the current task force is pretty large. There's about twenty, probably more than that, twenty-five members on the task force right now. There's no representation from the finance sector, and there's also potentially a lot of conflicts of interest. A lot of the members of that group would actually be probably applying for funds, depending on what projects they might have in any given year. And then just a little background, if anyone's unfamiliar with this. Oh, I'll scroll down there for you. And so the Housing Trust Fund was created by Resolution 20630 back in November of 2020. And this action was in response to a rising need in the community to keep existing affordable housing stock in good condition, as well as to expand housing options for those in need. And the Housing Trust Fund also aligns with objectives and the growth policy as follows. It creates safe, available, accessible and affordable housing for all Helena residents and to support and expand the supply of housing for lower-income senior citizens, persons with disabilities, homeless and others of special needs. Supports the preservation and rehabilitation of the existing housing stock. And so community development staff are currently working with Andrew Shinania to create an administrative policy manual and an application for use of the funds. And I think the guidelines, and, I'm sorry, the administrative policies are actually attached in here as well, if you'd like to look. And we do have one more updated version. Now, we've just kind of been, and it's just in the works. We're going over that with him now. And then kind of part of that process would be get, been getting a lot of feedback from the Housing Task Force and then specifically from AARP and Mback and, see Habitat for Humanity and a few other people that have just really combed through there and given us a lot of feedback on, on how that might affect their constituents. So I, that's about what I have for you. I'll turn it over to you for questions. And I think Sharon will also be available. If, if there's a question I can't answer, I will defer to Sharon. So thank you so much.
Thanks for your presentation. Comments or questions from the commission?
Here, I have a, a couple of comments and questions.
Please.
First, welcome Kara. Thank you for all of your work and Sharon's work on this. I know that is a lot, and so I appreciate all the work that, that you all have been doing. You know, I spent a bit of time talking with a couple of other municipalities that have housing trust funds. And actually, the, the existence of a, of, of advisory body was, was one of the key things that other municipalities really highlighted, that it is a very important body in really teasing out different proposals that, that come forward for use of the trust fund money. So, so I, I would say to answer your first question, I certainly am bought in to having, you know, kind of similar to the way that we, that we operate with our zoning commission, really a body that is digging into these proposals. The other bit of feedback that I received was really having experts in the field that know and understand how to finance these types of projects. They're very complicated projects. And, you know, I would just point to, right now, the draft of the guidelines that we have, page six. You know, this is really what this body is going to be looking at. Vacancy rates, debt service coverage ratio, income trending at 2%, expense trending at 3%. You know, very complex financing structures. And that was something that was really lifted up in my conversations with other municipalities. Like, there may be a desire to sort of treat this like any kind of advisory committee with a broad array of stakeholders. But what you really need are people that know and understand how to finance these projects. I have a couple more points, so I want to make, Mayor, because this is important. The other thing that I would just say, as it relates to conflict of interest, you know, we have that issue with the zoning commission and others, right? It is entirely possible for someone to have a conflict of interest and to recuse themselves from a specific decision-making point. So I, I do think it is important to have experts in this field, recognizing that at some point, they may be part of a project. They simply recuse themselves, similar to the way that we work with zoning commission. So the two questions that I have for you, one is the size. Five to seven members. And maybe this is really a question for Sharon. As, as we've sort of dealt with quorum issues, you know, how do you feel about that number? Is it enough? Particularly if we do have a circumstance where one or two members have to recuse themselves? Do we want a slightly bigger body? And then, you know, there are some, I think, I think it makes sense to have people who are impacted and have an, an understanding of nonprofit and low-income housing. But just like, do we feel confident that we'll be able to recruit people who know and understand, that can get through page six of the guidelines and, and really help to rank projects that are viable and that we should invest in?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Olafman, I think two very good questions. Your first question, five to seven, if Kara can correct me. I think that was modeled close to what Missoula has, remember, on their advisory committee. Once you get more people on your advisory committee, the more you get, sometimes the harder it is to get a quorum. We often have that problem with, for example, our downtown TIP advisory group. If you got eleven on the committee, you need six to get a quorum. If you got three to five, you can always adjust the time in, and the place to get that group together. So I think five, seven is a good amount. That's kind of also, I've seen other loan advisory groups that have a similar amount to that. I recognize and don't disagree with your second point. We were trying to, as you indicated, trying to get a broader scope, but trying to get more people with expertise. So for example, not having two members. I agree that having two members of the housing insecurity past on the, not tasked for a advisor group may be, be, may be difficult to find people who are that unless they have experienced it in their earlier lives and have moved up to other things. But having said that, I believe I, Kara can tell me. I think part of this is also modeled after a makeup similar to Missoula's task force, who was, I, maybe not heavy, but initially, I think the recommendation, they had had even more. But I appreciate and I understand that having, these are difficult projects to, to analyze. I would say they're probably, though, when you think of a planning board doing a subdivision, that's equally kind of a technical thing. So I, I appreciate the fact that by maybe, and that's why we brought it in front of the commission. This is just a recommendation. If you have some recommendations in terms of how many members you would want with similar backgrounds, I think it is very helpful to have people in the real estate sector and in banking and finance specifically. Perhaps what I'm hearing, you suggest that instead of having two member, committee members, maybe having a couple of, whether you call it the nonprofit, they could even be the for-profit housing sector. Little different to how you put projects together. If you're for-profit than nonprofit, but capital stacking is an issue for both of them. So we're definitely open to any suggestions that any of the commission might have. And I can see Kara kind of agreeing that to tweak this. The next step would be, once we have discussion to get some guidance on the makeup, is that we do bring this forward to the commission for a resolution creating a committee similar to our advisory committees. I don't know if that answered your question, Commissioner Olafman, but.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly supportive of a resolution to create this recommended advisory body. Do have a question for the manager, and it relates to something Commissioner Olafman brought up relative to conflict of interest. So her observation was that someone could simply recuse his or herself. And, and I guess my question to the manager would be, what if that individual did not? Is there recourse?
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, I, I do believe there is. I think it's a legal recourse that would be put on to that individual who voted and used that authority. So Thomas would actually be the best person, I believe, to provide answer. But it would be more, the, the difficult part when we asked Thomas to provide an answer on this is that, you know, he works for the commission. So what would be, the question for Thomas would be, he works for the city. So what's the risk to the city, Thomas? Perhaps is the different question. What's the risk to the city of having someone on the board who has a potential conflict of interest in that they do not recuse themselves?
and if they do not recuse themselves?
Mayor, Commissioners, I mean, one, one individual, if they did have a conflict of interest, I don't think would cause the advisory body's recommendation to be null and void. And I also don't think it would necessarily void or prohibit or preclude the Commission from acting on a particular request. But certainly, it, it doesn't look good. And what Manager Harlowshock is, is pointing out is conflicts of interests and violations of that are, are really up to the, the individual to ensure compliance. So if they're, you know, the county attorney charges those violations, and I would not, my office would not represent either the Commission or members of an advisory board if they violate state ethics or conflicts of, conflicts of interest law.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, well, first, I want to say I'm really grateful. This is, I loved reading through this and appreciative of the recommendation and, on the whole, supportive. My question was in terms of staffing for this. And I know that we're not talking about the administrative rules part tonight, but so much of what's included in there that will go to this advisory board requires a lot of staff work. And so I'm wondering, you know, how are we, is, is, you know, are we going to be paying for the additional staff work out of the Housing Trust Fund? And, you know, is that going to be a particular assigned staffer? Or is that, you know, all of community development? Or do we know yet? And then the other part of that question, then I have another, but I'll wait for an answer. The other part of that is, I know the City Clerk's Office has been working on, you know, really redeveloping what are, streamlining our, our advisory boards so that we do have consistent bylaws across of them. And, and we're moving in a more effective manner where it's instead of a hodgepodge of bylaws and meetings and the rest of it. And will this fall under that same conversation of, you know, consistent bylaws across advisory boards?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I can answer the first part. I will let the City Clerk or whoever, or City Attorney answer the second part. The first part is, part of the reason and the rationale for the City Commission and for this department in asking for a housing coordinator was develop the expertise in-house to work on these projects. Kara and I have already had discussions. Although she's new to some of this, there is training available that can get us more expertise. But having said that, that is part of the reason why we, A, have some other city staff financed that may be able to help or hopefully Thomas may be able to help. I'm not committing to either one of those. But also that's part of the reason why it is so important to give some thought and consideration to the makeup of the advisory group. It's not unlike the downtown TIP advisor groups or those other advisor groups. Those are essentially looking at funding packages put together. It's going to be similar to what we do with the single-family rehab program. So the city would like to develop more of that expertise in-house. And, and she's, and so those are two are primary tasks to kind of get the Housing Trust Fund up and running and also kind of work on some of those other grants. So if we need additional staff, we'll certainly, I'll be working with the city manager to put that in place. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it did, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Dean, did you have any follow-up questions regarding?
Yeah.
Board's process?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, is this going to follow the same process we have right now and be included in, you know, whatever this more streamlined process is moving forward?
Well, to answer that question, Commissioner Dean, right now, we're in the process of developing new internal administrative policies and governing principles. While nothing's been formally launched as far as those bylaws that I've been working with the city attorney and the city manager on formulating. I, we can be certain that best practices are going to be followed when creating this board. And we'll start rolling them into the new administrative and governing policies that you adopted last February. That will certainly happen as this board is developed with the community development and the Housing Trust Fund Coordinator.
Okay, great.
If I may, one of the, the points that you asked, Commissioner Dean, was around staffing. And it's a, it's a really interesting point in the role of the advisory boards in particular, because this is, in essence, an advisory board who will be directing a staffer. And typically, our advisory boards are not directing staff, they are liaisons. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that Kara's role will be in support of as a liaison, but not in direction from the advisory board, just to make sure of that. And then, and, and that's consistently across all of our advisory boards, that role of the staff liaison is to be the person in support of. But as a subject matter expert and helping them get through these processes, but not in direction from. So just to make sure that that is definitely something that we're working through right now.
That's helpful. And then, Mr. Mayor, my last question was, one of the things that popped out at me is I'm, I'm curious, and I don't know if there's precedence for this at all or not, but so much of this has to do with what the state is doing and how the state is supporting these kind of projects and within this arena. And I, I don't, this is just an idea. And I don't know if it's doable or not, but it, I, it might be worth having someone from the state on this advisory board that kind of has that, you know, more 20,000-foot view as to what's happening and maybe more perspective to be able to provide the board. But, you know, I don't know if that, I mean, again, kind of goes back to that conflict of interest conversation, but I think it might be helpful to have someone that does have that broader view at the state and kind of watching where this, where these kind of initiatives are going beyond just Helena.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Well, Ms. Hogan, thanks. And for me, I think seven would be a good number for the board, the advisory board. And should just start the process. And those stakeholders that you mentioned will be critical for that board because they will have the expertise to, to steer the funding properly. And so I strongly support those stakeholders that, those experts that were mentioned. All right. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do you have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands or no written public comment on this item. Mr. Mayor, would you also like to take public comment on the previous agenda item specific to HB 257 and 121?
Where is that? Oh.
The Board of Health one.
Yeah, we will have, do we have any public comments for both items? The City County Board Health Authority, HB 257 and HB 121. We will leave it open for a minute or so. Madam Clerk, any raised hands?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. The next topic here, item four, is information only. But the public may comment, should they have any comments? Information to update on the status of the 2017 AD Self-Evaluation Transition Plan, Helena Open Lands and Leash Requirement for Dogs, Snow Program Review, including public outreach on the program. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on that, on those?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands and no written public comment on those items.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk?
I see no raised hands for general public comment, Mr. Mayor, and I have no written public comment on that item either.
Thank you. Any final comments from the Commission? This time, this meeting is formally adjourned.
Wait, Commission, wait, oh. Mayor, I, I need to be able to summarize, sorry. What, summarize what is?
Okay, first, before you go, Madam Clerk, do we have to get back into the meeting? Thomas, would you guide me there? What do we do? Because I just closed the technical.
It's done, I think you're closed, yeah?
Yeah, but Mayor, I think the manager just wanted you to give a summary of direction. Nothing substantive that already hasn't been discussed.
Please go ahead with your summary.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can't be sleeping at the wheel, you can't be sleeping at the wheel.
You just missed me. You took a left turn and left me on the road. Okay. On the follow-up, the Board of Health will set up the city-county meeting and ensure that we provide to the Commission what other cities are doing, along with conversations Thomas had with the League. We'll also, on the Civic Center, meet with the Steering Committee and include in that conversation the Big Sky Nonprofit Association. And we'll start with the resolution, although I, I feel like tonight I heard that you are all open. There's a consensus open that the conversation is more than just the RFP, which was the difference. And that, that's the area of disconnect that we continue to have. On the Housing Advisory Board, you're good with the Commission, is good with what the staff have proposed. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any final comments from the Commission on the summary? If not, this meeting is formally adjourned.